Okay, I would like to call the meeting of today, the May 5th meeting of the Newmarket Town Council to order, and we will start as always with the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, which means the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual for liberty and justice for all.
And before, uh, before we do any other business, I would accept a motion to seal the non-public minutes.
I'll make a motion to seal the non-public minutes.
I'll second that.
Any questions? Seeing none, if you could call the roll, please. Counsel Dumas?
Aye.
Counsel Sanders?
Aye.
Counsel Blackstone?
Aye.
Counsel Braybeck?
Aye.
Counsel Kiper?
Aye.
Counsel Conley?
Aye.
Counsel Weinstein?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero. And then just a couple, um, housekeeping items, um, and this is for all of the council as well as the public. If people can speak up, this is a sort of a, a room that has a lot of, you know, kind of background noise and we're all, even the council up here, we're, you know, socially distanced and so it's a little bit challenging, um, to hear each other. So if we could just make sure that we all speak up and anyone who, um, is here for public comment, if you could do the same. Um, I also want to just, uh, remind everyone as I open public comment in a minute that, um, there is a three-minute, um, time limit and it's not an opportunity for a back and forth with the council. It's just an opportunity for the public to, um, state their opinion. So with that, uh, I will open the public comment at seven oh two. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak tonight? Come on up and if you could state your name and address for the record, please.
Marker Anne, 219 New Row. Uh, I'm here to, uh, request, urge at the town council, rescind the mandatory face mask in the town of Newmarket. Their state has already rescinded it and I believe that it would be time to let people make their own choices. Anything else you'd like to know?
Nope.
Will this be voted on tonight?
Um, I'm, I'm not sure. It's on the agenda tonight.
Okay, I can hang around. I'm curious.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public who wishes to speak?
Hi, I'm Rachel Williver. I live at 26 Maston Drive. I'm here again to let you know I'm not in favor of continuing the mask ordinance that has been in place in our beautiful town since August 5th, 2020. This has gone on long enough. It's time to let people choose how to go forward during this time. If someone feels comfortable in public without one, that's their decision. If someone would rather be cautious and continue to wear one, that's their decision. Face masks have been shown over and over to be ineffective. As even the CDC reported last July, you can look this up, that 85% of people who got COVID either wore one quote "all the time" or quote "most of the time." 85% of the people that got it wore a mask. They don't work. Let's not wait and see what the other towns in New Hampshire do with their mask mandates. Let New Hampshire be the, Newmarket be the leader and remove this ordinance immediately, please. Thank you.
Is there anyone else from the public who wishes to speak? Seeing none, I will close public comment at seven oh four. The next item of business is for the council to, um, vote on the minutes. And so we have two, uh, meeting minutes to accept and the first is the non-public meeting minutes from April 21st and I would accept a motion to approve those.
I'll make a motion to approve the non-public minutes from April 21st.
I'll second that.
Any questions or comments or changes? Did you have your hand up?
No.
Seeing none, if you could call the roll, please. Counsel Dumas?
Aye.
Counsel Sanders?
Aye.
Counsel Blackstone?
Aye.
Counsel Braybeck?
Aye.
Counsel Kiper?
Aye.
Counsel Conley?
Aye.
Counsel Weinstein?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero. And then the next are the meeting, the regular meeting minutes from April 21st and I would accept a motion to approve those.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the regular April 21st meeting.
I will second that motion.
Any changes, questions, comments? Seeing none, if you could call the roll, please. Counsel Dumas?
Aye.
Counsel Sanders?
Aye.
Counsel Blackstone?
Aye.
Counsel Braybeck?
Aye.
Counsel Kiper?
Aye.
Counsel Conley?
Aye.
Counsel Weinstein?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero. Thank you. Next we have the reporter, the town manager.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, to begin my written report, just COVID update, as of April 29th, we have 28 active cases in town and 541 cumulative cases of 5.7% of the population, uh, cumulative or 0.3% of the population, uh, currently have, uh, tested positive COVID ID, I mean COVID-19. Uh, these cases, 5.5 of these are in, uh, percent or in institutional settings. What we're seeing now is the number stabilizing, uh, while they're still higher than we had in February. The reason why the numbers were so low in February was because the fact that everybody was shut in, um, people weren't out and about like they are now. Um, and that's something that we're discussing, I mean, that we're gonna have that. We're gonna have a stable number from now on. You're not gonna, uh, get rid of COVID. It's not gonna be zero. So we're always gonna have to see a certain number of cases in the community, um, much like any other, uh, virus like that. So we're, we're noticing the trend to be somewhere between, um, 15 to 35. So that's, um, seems to be the trend line as of right now. For vaccinations, as of April 27th, 762,346 people in New Hampshire received their first dose of the vaccination or 56.2% of the population and 348,758, uh, or 25.7% are fully vaccinated. We've been working with the school district right now and currently in organs, organizing a vaccination clinic for students, um, that have not yet gotten the vaccination. Uh, there were some, uh, large site places that they could have gone to in the recent weeks, but not every student was able to drive over there. In addition, since the writing of my report, the, uh, CDC guidelines has changed the vaccination and have reduced that number aged down to 12. So if, uh, parent-
Is that official?
That is official.
Oh.
That is official. Um, so that parents will now be able to receive, um, give vaccinations for their, and I blank, and I don't wanna say which one it is. It's one has been approved. I just don't remember which one.
Pfizer.
Pfizer. So yes, we are looking into doing that as well and what the rate, we're still waiting for all the regulations, um, but we've been talking, in talking with the Sico's Health Network to allow that. As you may be aware, on May 7th, the Safer at Home guidelines will expire, uh, and be replaced by universal, uh, best practices. The Safer at Home guidelines include the regulations restaurants, barbers, summer camps, as well as about 40 other guidelines that we have been, all been following for the past year. This will begin, this will be the beginning of a large shift in our day-to-day lives. Uh, business and private entities may now operate how they feel is safest for them, for their cus, them and their customers. Please be aware that there'll be no more enforcement of those regulations. There's currently, you would be calling the Attorney General's Office if there was a violation and they would come down. They were very clear on a home security call after Friday, there were no more violations for any of those guidelines. There will be no more penalties. I'm just trying to get some of the new things that came out today. First, so for example, one of the things that you probably noticed first will be tables will not no longer have to be six feet apart in restaurants unless the business requests it. Yeah, so this is, as they're saying, it's the beginning of the, um, the winding down to the summer operations. They're also discussing the winding, uh, fix-site vaccination clinics, like for example, the Newington Mall and, um, the Dover Bus Depot. They're no longer doing first appointments any longer. Those are only gonna be second appointments. That is so, could those are gonna be shutting down. The main goal is to move the vaccinations from the government to your, your care providers. Um, they feel that'd be more beneficial for people who may not, um, lack of a better term, trust the government to receive the, from their own medical expert. So. Other items regarding this that are not in my written report. Um, we've been working with the, uh, school district also on logistics for high school graduation, which are on June 11th. They will be doing an outside graduation at the parking lot across from the high school. Uh, that will just, I'm saying this publicly and we're gonna hammer this out here. Avoid the high school area at six o'clock Friday night, from 5:00 PM to 8:00 PM on Friday night, June 11th. We're gonna be detouring traffic going east down Grant Road to Ash Swamp Road to go around and it'll be one way going west because there's no other way to detour. We wanna try to limit as much traffic down there for as least, smallest amount of disruption as well. So, um, they are still, we're still going over some of the regulations that will be in place. Uh, you know, wearing masks, what their, what their protocols are, but that's, you know, we're just trying to get out there that, that day, it's gonna be a traffic nightmare there. And we're doing that, you know, usually they hold it inside. They can't, just for social distancing guidelines. So we're working with them so they can at least have a ceremony this year and it'll be outside. Back to my written report. I'm sorry.
Oh.
You need to-
We'll wait until the end, please.
Any, I, I won't, I, I'm not, people need to, I gotta go through the chair. So. Um, typically in the summer, we just have one meeting in July and August, with the first July meeting being the week, uh, week of Independence Day. I would suggest that we cancel that one. I don't think many people would wanna be here the week of, the 4th of July for a meeting. Um, and we could also cancel the first meeting in August as well. Uh, we then just hold, uh, meetings in July 21st and August 18th. If something comes up, we can schedule an additional meeting. That way, we, we've been doing this traditionally. Usually summers are really quiet anyways. So that should be fine. Just some other unwritten items. I did receive the, um, planning study proposal for MRI to, you know, review the operations of the planning and building, uh, department to see what we need and what we can do in the future. Um, I'm gonna also ask them to look at what the potential of a, uh, town engineer position would be and how that could relate to this as well, while, while studying this. They're gonna be interviewing all the staff in the planning and building, as well as myself, to determine what, you know, what it's gonna look like and where, where we can go from there. Finally, I sent you an email with a lot of information on the Community Power Coalition that the Energy and Environment Committee, uh, sent me and I probably will step all over this, so I'd ask the member who is here, uh, to correct me. What this is, is a group of municipalities. We would be the fifth to join in, um, that would be, as soon as state law allows, basically being able to purchase electricity or utilities and sell it to, at a low rate, sell it to the people. Am I hitting it correctly?
Basically.
Yeah.
As much as I understand it.
Okay. So that's the information we have now. Um, my understanding is that they're gonna be asking for a resolution to be introduced to support this, so, um, a lot of homework with all those documents between now and sometime this spring or early summer. And that is all I, oh, sidewalks. I've been getting a lot of, a lot of emails and a lot of comments on sidewalks in two areas, Bay Road and Grant Road. First, we are looking at both of those. Understand that budgetary issues are always there, that we may not have the budget to do those. We are estimating that the, uh, Grant Road is somewhere in the neighborhood of $150,000 to $174,000 to construct. Um, it's not a short area. Also, it may not happen this summer because we'd have to engineer it and do that construction. So it is on the radar. We're not pushing it aside. Bay Road is even more difficult due to the narrowness of some of the areas and we may not get the clearance. Um, if you think of it where it comes right by the bill, the mill buildings, Bryant Rock, which is right near the road, how narrow that gets and then add a sidewalk on there. So that's something we'd have to consider as well. So we are looking at it, um, especially there, since we're gonna be opening the road anyways and, um, just so the public knows as well. To go along with that project on Bay Road, I am requesting, uh, to suspension of the rules on a resolution later to withdraw money from the, um, motor vehicle fund that we use to have paved, road paving in order to pave Bay Road while we're doing it. The USDA grant only covered the, uh, patching and trenching of those areas. While we're in there, we, that Bay Road needs to get paved. So we're just asking to rip it up, the, the whole area, rip it up and pave the entire thing and withdrawing $146,000 to do so. But, and the Public Works Director and Environmental Service Director here to speak on that as well. That's all I have tonight, Madam Chair.
Thank you. So are there any questions or comments for the town manager? I'll start with Counsel Blackstone.
We don't do that. That's a school. Yeah, no, that's a school.
Counsel Kiper.
There was an email, maybe two, about crosswalks. Is that covered under the same, at the same time or is that a whole other?
Yeah, that's a whole, we can just look at that and determine where it could go.
Is that, that's a case by case?
Yeah.
Okay.
That was, um, just to-
Yeah.
-jump on that. That was in one of those emails about the sidewalks was also the crosswalk question.
And then also remember, it, it depends on where, on what road it is as well. We don't, if it's a state road, we have to follow state guidelines as for crosswalks and where they, you know, the state frowns upon them in like middle of the streets and those kind of items.
Any other questions or comments?
Oh, yeah. I think that specifically referenced a crosswalk on Grant Road for the kids coming out of that development and trying to cross the street to get to school. And I think that was the concern was the Grant Road. That, that if we couldn't do the sidewalks, could we do a cross, a crossing guard or some kind of a crosswalk for the kids?
I'm not seeing any other comments, so we will move on to committee reports. Are there any committee reports? Counsel Dumas?
At the request of the town council, at a previous meeting, the ordinance oversight committee met on the 28th to rework the, um, ordinance number seven that was originally brought and proposed for passage. There was some language there that was sent out by the town manager the other day and, um, the meeting itself was made available online a few days ago as well. So I hope that folks did have some time to either go through that or at least solicit some feedback. I will say that the committee did go through the two individual emails that we received from Counsel Sanders and Counsel Kiper to make sure that we were addressing both those comments as well as what we had heard from the public. So you will see our work tonight.
Any other committee reports? Um, I will say that the Energy and Environment Committee met, uh, last night and, um, a few things that I just wanted to mention. The committee is working on a solarized program and so that would incentivize residences to, um, install solar panels. And they're working, they said, we sent out an RFP and are working on evaluating those RFPs and so, um, hopefully we'll have something in front of the town council, um, probably in about a month or so is my guess. The town manager mentioned the, um, the Community Power Coalition. So that information that he sent along, uh, is going to be important because that last night, the, um, Energy and Environment Committee did recommend or, and will be sending a resolution to the town council, uh, with the recommendation that we, um, opt into that, into that program. So, um, you know, it, it'll follow the same pattern of our, uh, of any other resolution. So we'll have a first reading and a second reading and have the opportunity to learn more about it. Uh, and then the, probably the biggest, um, project that the Energy and Environment Committee is working on is this, um, a, a resolution for Ready for 100. And that is, um, uh, for the town, um, to be fully, um, uh, for electricity to be, uh, through renewable sources by 2030 and all fuel by 2050. So they're working on that resolution also and that I expect will be in front of the council or forwarded to the council, uh, at, in June. And that's all. So seeing no other committee reports, we will move on, um, to resolutions and ordinances in the second reading and we have a few. Um, so the first item that we have is ordinance number six, 2020, 2021, and that's reaffirming the wearing of face coverings. And is there a motion?
I will make a motion to rescind emergency ordinance number six, 2020 slash 2021, uh, an ordinance reaffirming requiring the wearing of face coverings under certain conditions within the town of Newmarket.
And is there a second? I will second, um, for discussion purposes. Did you wanna start?
Yeah, um, we put it on the agenda just so we could either get reaffirmation that this is in place. By doing the, the motion the way that Counsel Dumas did, this resolution would still, if, if the motion passes, this would sunset on June 7th. We wanted to make sure, either, you know, get the sense of the council after the decision for Safer at Home guidelines to go, well, first is rescind the state mandate, uh, being rescinded, then Safer at Home guidelines going away this Friday, um, what the sense of the council is. We've talked with the fire chief, the health officer and police chief, basically emergency management team about what do we do? One, you know, if the mandate's still in place, we'll enforce it as we are now. There are some difficulties that may come up from the enforcement of it. For example, you may be in a restaurant, but the tables are closer than six feet, but our ordinance says if you're within six feet of somebody, you must wear a mask. So that, we can't, we can't overrule the state mandate, but the ma, our mask mandate would not comply in that situation. So it would be that kinda, and if you remember outside, it is, if you think you're gonna be within six feet of an individual, that we request that you wear a mask. If this were to be rescinded, we'd go back to what we had prior to August, which is highly encouraging people to wearing masks while in public or when they think they're within six feet of individuals. But we just wanted to get a sense of the council and what they wish to do.
Counsel Kiper.
Um, I'm assuming nothing would prevent a business from having their own mask requirement, obviously.
Absolutely not. Correct.
And, yeah, I guess that's my only question.
Counsel, um, since you made the motion, did you wanna add anything? I don't wanna put you on the spot, but I, I mean, we-
No, it's okay. Um, I've been consistently voting against enforcing this ordinance because I didn't believe it was proper at the time. Um, and I, I still don't, but throughout the entire pandemic, I, as a store manager, was required by my company to enforce wearing masks in my store. I also have a store in Portsmouth, which is, it is law there still. So we ran into a lot of the issues that business owners were talking about prior to there being mask mandates in New Hampshire and in our town. So I understand the difficulty that comes from there. Uh, for me, I always look at it as it is a personal choice. It is a matter of personal responsibility to encourage best practices and safe mask usage. We have counselors tonight who are wearing, you know, masks now because they've made the choice that is the right thing to do. And I, I wholeheartedly agree with that. Uh, but I think that we're at a point right now as a town where we should not be enforcing this ordinance as it's written. It can cause some issues, I'm imagining, as we, as the state guidelines do fall back to the universal best practices now. And I, I would not want there to be an issue either for this town, any town officials, any, you know, businesses in our community by having this on the books. So I'd ask that the council rescind, let it sunset, let it go away, um, and encourage people to still, you know, use masks when it's required or, or when it should be required, when it should be common sense, you know, usages. But that's all I had. Just, I forgot to add one thing.
Yes.
So I also did a poll. I asked my colleagues in the Greater Sico's of the municipalities with the managers I talked to, uh, only three others have a mask ordinance. And that's Durham, Portsmouth and Exeter. Durham intends on keeping theirs. Portsmouth has it still on the books until June 30th. City manager there wasn't sure if there would be an attempt to rescind it earlier. And Exeter had no intention of having that discussion, but it's sunsetting in a, in a week or two. So, um, with ours going longer into June, I just wanted to, you know, we just re-upped it a couple of weeks ago. I wanted to have that put out there.
Thank you. Thank you. Council Brayback.
My concern, so I read the universal best practices. And it was very clear that, you know, the, a layered approach is the safest thing, right? So distance and a mask, those things add up to being the safest. But restaurants and businesses have a financial incentive to fit as many customers into the restaurants as they can, as many people, you know, bringing capacities of shopping back up to where they used to be. And so it sounds like a mask is the only potential safety measure that, that would be in place. Um, so for that reason, I'm, I'm in favor of continuing to have a mask mandate for, as, as we decided a couple of weeks ago. You look confused.
No, um, I, I was thinking, because one of the things that the guidelines also state is that if you're within six feet of an individual and you're eating, you're still going to take your, you can't take your mask off. So you, the, the table, the table thing is one of the issues, but it's just, it's, our biggest concern is we're going to have a lot of people come in and say, there are no more guidelines. The state has said so. How can we force this ordinance? Which we know, we can, because we had the authority back in August when there was no mask mandate. Um, that was the only, that, that's the big thing. We, we agree, I mean, we're, we're still encouraging mask wearing, a hundred percent.
What support are we going to give to businesses who continue to want to enforce a mask mandate in their place of business because it's a small place of business?
Absolutely.
They want to keep their employees safe and you have customers coming in saying-
There's no state law, I'm going to do what I want.
They can, if, if, much like any other private entity, they can make, require, um, items to enter their business. The classic is no shirts, no shoes, no service.
Right.
Add mask to that. If a business says no shirts, no shoes, no mask, no service, and they don't, if they decide not to leave, the police will come and handle them with a trespass order.
Okay, so they will be given some support.
Yep, yep.
So I can see that absolutely-
That's called, yeah, that's trespass.
Yeah, I can absolutely see that happening.
But the, I agree, Helen. By having a mask mandate, the owner of the business doesn't have to, single-handedly, they're not the front line anymore. Now they're the second line, right? Because the town has a mask mandate. So they can't say, well, my business is separate, right? They're enforcing the town mandate. And I think that gives strength to the local business owners. It backs them up.
Thank you. Council Kuiper.
Um, I will just say I'm doubtful anything really would change in town, whether or not we rescind it or not. Because I think that people that wear masks are wearing masks and they're, you know, going out or not. Um, you know, I started to notice some people not wearing masks in trails and stuff. I don't wear a mask when I'm on a trail, some people do, you know? Um, I'm skeptical if you don't have six feet separation in a restaurant, whether wearing a mask or not is going to make any difference. You know, I mean, you're taking it off to eat. I, I don't think that's really going to change anything. And I think particularly with June seventh being post U and H graduation, um, that's kind of the, I mean, I frankly, if U and H wasn't there, I don't know if we would have ever had to even have a mask mandate. Because I think our numbers would have been probably a fraction of what they were. I mean, just get, being, you know, just guessing, but, um, yeah, so I'm, I'm thinking, I don't think much is going to change. Because I think the businesses that don't want people inside with masks are going to continue to do that. And they're probably going to also not, you know, they're going to keep the tables separated. Um, and the businesses that don't care as much, you know, are going to put the tables as close as they want. And, and I know for a fact there is businesses in town that have not required anyone to wear a mask and no one has called the police, no one has shut them down. And, you know, it's, it is what it is. So, I mean, I think with letting it end June seventh, I mean, at some point we have to. Uh, I think that's a fact. And we're getting to the point where, I mean, I think we're at least close to, I think at least half the state has had at least one shot, maybe even more. Um, I don't know what the, you know, um, we're going to get to a point where there's going to be people that don't want to get vaccinated, don't want to wear masks, and I don't think we're going to be able to change that. And I, and, yeah. So I, I'm in favor of letting it end on June seventh. I think because I think, yeah, like I said, with the U and H kids gone, once we get to graduation, that's going to bring a lot of out of town people. Um, but after that, I feel like we're going to, at some point, need to wind it down.
Right. Um, I just want a, a point of clarification before we move on. Uh, and I do want to, I do have a few comments also. But is the motion to rescind it this evening or is the motion to let it sunset on June seventh?
There wouldn't be no need for a motion to let it-
To let it sunset, right. So the motion was to rescind it tonight?
That was my intention.
That, right. Which is fine, I just want to, I just want us to be clear of what we're potentially voting on.
Thank you, I, I was confused about that, okay.
I, I know that that came up. Some folks thinking sunsetting, going to, I'm okay if we want to change it to, you know, do something for the seventh or just, you know, not do anything tonight with the intention of it sunsetting on the seventh. But I think that is, it is a good time to discuss it this evening because universal best practices are going in effect on the seventh.
I agree. Um, Council Conley, please.
Thank you. Um, do we have, um, do we have any information about, um, about the extent to which, um, to which other businesses in the, in the community, um, are continuing to sort of rely on that backup kind of, you know, from the, from the town and, and kind of serving as that, you know, kind of second line rather than that first line? Um-
I guess what I would do is compare it to, um, Dover, who doesn't have a mask mandate. As soon as the governor's order was lifted, you would, you would probably see about ninety percent of the businesses then said, while we understand the governor's order and part of the lifting of the mask mandate allows private businesses, at this point in time, we are still going to require masks to enter our business. Um, I think, and that's pretty universal for those communities that don't have a mask. Man, we don't know yet because we just, we haven't, we still have a mask.
Right.
So I, I think that's the way you have to look at it, is how, how those who got rid of it are handling it. And ninety, uh, it, very few businesses have gotten rid of it in a private, in a sense.
Yeah, done. Um, Council Kuiper.
Sorry, just, um, I mean, I assume we would know if the police had gotten an influx in the last month. You know, they've had maybe what, less than a dozen calls, probably less than that.
Less than that, zero fines.
Yeah, so, I mean, I think it's, it's, at this point, I think most of the business owners sort of have figured out, like, how to deal with people that don't want to wear masks. And, um, you know, at a certain point, you sort of have to either do it or, you know, you're either going to enforce it or not.
And to be honest, those who have been, those have had the enforcement actions are the same situation that was, was asked. That at that point, you're trespass, you know, you're trespassing, get off the property. So it's, there's no, it's really the, the, the practice won't change whether or not the ordinance is there.
Um, I have just a couple of comments that I wanted to make. I, I was absolutely in favor of the mask ordinance back in August and have been throughout this, throughout the last several months. Um, but the, what we were faced with in August was very different than what we're faced with now. And in August, we were, we had, um, the unknown of what was going to happen when the students, when the U and H students returned. Uh, we did not have a vaccine. Um, and I think that our businesses were, and when I say our businesses, not just in Newmarket, in the state, in the country, were really struggling with trying to figure out how they were going to, how they're going to get through summer and what they were going to do in the winter. And we just didn't know, and we wanted to support all of our local businesses as best as we could. Um, at this point, I mean, we, we know kind of where we're at, right? We know, um, cases have stabilized and over fifty percent of the people have been vaccinated. As the town manager reported, they're going to open it up to the twelve, um, to fifteen-year-old group. Um, and so more and more people are going to be vaccinated. And I think that the mask wearing, I'll continue to wear a mask when I'm in social situations. Even though I'm fully vaccinated, I like to think that other people will too. But at some point, we have to accept that there's some personal responsibility that people are going to have to, have to make. And again, I think we're, it was a public, I feel like we were in a place where we had to be responsible for the public before. And now, um, people have to make some personal choices. So, um, I know I won't frequent a restaurant that doesn't require, or, or a business that doesn't require masks. I won't. I went to a business not long, last weekend where the bartender came up to me, pulled their mask down to take my order, and, which seemed ridiculous. Um, everyone was, he was wearing a mask, but, you know, pulled his mask down to take my order. So I won't go back to that business. I mean, and those are the choices that I think we're all going to have to make as we move forward. So, um, I am in favor of rescinding the mask ordinance. And, um, are there any other, Council Brayback?
I would just say I agree with pretty much everything that's been said. I think I'm also in favor of the mask, like it needs to end at some point, I fully agree with that. Um, I do agree with the statement that was made of waiting until the U and H students have gone home. Um, you know, letting it go until June seventh or, I don't know, maybe we talk about it a week before that if people are really eager to get it over with. Um, I know students' graduation is before that. Um, I just, I just think that, that makes more logical sense, like that, there's a reason behind that as opposed to, you know, nothing has actually changed in the past two weeks. Um, that just makes more sense to me.
Council Conley.
I agree with that. I think that there's, um, I think identifying that and letting it sunset on the seventh makes, makes a lot of sense for that reason. Um, I also think that it makes sense from a, like a, a practical standpoint so that, um, businesses can, you know, businesses have a little bit of time if there are any additional preparations they need to make because this ordinance is, is going away, that they'll have, you know, like three weeks, three weeks to, um, you know, get additional signage if they need it or make any additional preparations if this, um, if the ordinance is, is going away. I think it'd be nice to be able to allow them some time to plan.
Because all the signers in the moment says there's a mask ordinance in town, you need to wear a mask. So in order to allow them time to get new signage, make their employees aware that this is what's going to happen, I think makes sense. And I think waiting for U and H to, to leave would, would also make sense. So I, I'd be in favor of letting it sunset on the, on the seventh, as we originally said, and not reinstating it.
Council Kuiper.
I think that does, um, also make sense. I mean, I was talking to a local business owner recently who had, um, a group of women come in without masks. And I think that they had all been vaccinated, so they just didn't think they needed them. And she said she didn't even have any to give them because she just had stopped buying them, you know what I mean? So it would be kind of nice to get them, you know, I mean, we used to sell them, I don't anymore, but, you know, to just give us some time to get those, the business owners time to get that kind of stuff. If they want to keep it, that way they can easily say, hey, here's a mask. Because that, um, is something that, you know, we were doing six months ago for sure, but most places I don't think are anymore. Keeping them on hand anyway.
Any other, um, comments? So the motion that we have is to rescind the, um, the ordinance this evening. Um, so that's what, so a yay vote is to rescind the ordinance. And a nay vote would be to keep it. And, um, and then we would, well, and that's what it is.
Unless we reauthorize, it would sunset on the seventh.
Right, unless we, unless we reauthorize, it would sunset on the seventh.
Yeah.
Um, so seeing no other comments, if you could call the roll, please. Council Dumont?
Aye.
Council Sanders?
Okay, so-
You're voting to rescind.
Voting to rescind, no, thank you.
Council Blackstone?
No.
Oh. Council Brayback?
No.
Council Kuiper?
No.
Council Conley?
No.
Council Weinstein?
Aye.
Motion fails, five to two. Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
From the sense of the council, should I, should we bring back the ordinance on June seventh? Because we've been bringing it forward for renewal, just out of a ministerial thing, we've just been bringing it forward. From the sense of the council, just don't bring it back again.
I think that's-
Yes, we'll let it sunset.
I suppose if something were to change-
Yeah.
And, you know, and the council asked to have it brought back-
Yep.
And that would be different.
Okay.
Okay, moving on, we have Resolution twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one dash forty-three, and it's the water and sewer rate increases, and I would accept a motion to approve that resolution.
Make a motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty slash twenty twenty-one dash forty-three, increase of water and sewer rate.
And we have Sean Gregg here to discuss.
Oh, thanks, Eric. Thanks for having me tonight. Um, this, the sewer rates all started back in, um, two thousand thirteen when we constructed the, uh, new wastewater treatment facility. At that time, I brought to the council, um, a choice of doing a waiting till the plant was constructed and do a one-time increase or to start increases early and do level increases, um, until we reached revenues meet expenses. The, so I created a model to do that work. And it, as it shows in your packet, that at this point in time, we're supposed to be at thirteen fifty-four, uh, per hundred cubic feet of water. We are, um, this proposal for the sewer side, we're proposing a sixty-five cent raise, and that puts us at twelve sixty-five, which is roughly, uh, eighty-nine cents less than where we projected back in two thousand thirteen. Um, the model does show that we need to get around the thirteen dollars and eighty cents range for the sewer. Um, the current, if you actually, uh, dump a gallon of water down the sink, um, that's roughly two cents per gallon for treating. Uh, for the water, uh, we have taken on a bunch of water projects to improve the water system. And that's replacing some eighteen ninety-five water mains and to improve our water supply and to remove arsenic from one of our wells. So the increase for that is fifty cents. And that's roughly, for the average user, that's around a penny a gallon.
Thank you. Council Dumont.
Yes. Um, been on this council for a little while, seen these a few times. I just want to say I really do appreciate the, the work that your department and you did to ensure that this was a, a guided increase and that it wasn't just one big abrupt hit to the community. And I think that when people see this, they're like, oh, great, it's going up again. But just understanding that we are trying to do what we can to stave it off and ensure that it is not one big massive hit. And I think it does really help the community. So it, it's just, in my opinion, worth, worth noting that every time it comes back.
It's hard, I don't like to raise rates. And in a lot of ways, raising it one time is easy for me. Raising it over a period of ten years is pretty difficult, challenging.
Any other questions, or, Council Kuiper?
Do you anticipate, um, once we get to thirteen-
Eighty?
Eighty, um, continuing to have to raise the rates much?
It all depends on, and I, I'll tell you right now, watching the cost of goods and what's going, happening right now, they may go, have to go up again, but I think we can really manage some much lesser increases. That's, that's the goal, is the, once we get there, do really minute increases so people don't see the effect. And they're not seeing all of a sudden where we're jumping the rate on them. Trying to control it.
Another question, um, so, you know, we replaced some of these pipes from eighteen ninety. How long is the lifespan of the pipes that we're putting in? Just curious.
We're going to probably get seventy-five years out of it.
Seventy-five years? Thanks.
Council Blackstone?
There's been some discussion about selling water to Newfield. Um, would that change the rate?
Um, I really can't speak to that because we haven't really engaged in really conversations with them. I know they have some challenges with arsenic over there. And they've reached out to us to start those conversations, but we really haven't gotten into that, into that yet.
Okay, so any, any final discussion?
On the other side of it, I would say generally, yes, it would help out. Because the more users you have on the system, the better, you know, the more income it helps spread, spread around.
Yeah, but we certainly wouldn't consider, uh, selling them water where our rates would go up as a result.
No, 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 we're not going to give it away.
Um, I'm seeing no other questions or comments. I appreciate having a plan. And you've stuck to this plan for, for many years. And so we really appreciate it. When we, um, when all of these projects are, are completed, uh, will you be updating your, because you had like a twenty-year water plan? Do you, are there plans to update that?
We consistently, um, work on the water and sewer plans, they're evolving. Um, right now, we're trying to do roughly half the dollar amount of project on the water system. The challenge is, is where we go after we complete these and what we can afford and how we can integrate all the pieces. And how we can maybe get some other funds and grants to blend it in to make it happen. It's, it's going to be, that doesn't wait till after we complete them, it's working now.
Right, and you're really good about, about finding all of those, finding all of those funding sources.
Yeah, they're drying up, so we'll see what we can do.
Um, seeing no other questions or comments, if you could call the roll, please. Counsel Dumont?
Aye.
Counsel Sanders?
Aye.
Counsel Blackstone?
Aye.
Counsel Brabec?
Aye.
Counsel Kiper?
Aye.
Counsel Conley? Counsel Weinstein?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero. And the next item that we have is Resolution 2020-2021-44, and that's the new system development connection fee, and I would accept a motion to approve that.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2020-2021-44, new system development connection fee.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Um, did you want to talk about that?
Sure. Uh, the planning book department really looked into, uh, currently we have impact fees and tie-in fees, uh, for people that come into the water system or the sewer system. And the impact fees are very rigid in how you can spend them, and very limited in what you can do with them. Um, so there's been a recommendation to change to a system development charge, connection fee. And I feel that it's a long time coming because our tie-in fees really need to be looked at. Uh, this would basically look at our assets, look at what we have, what people have already contributed to the system, and figure out what that worth is, and figure out what the actual cost that a person, uh, home or a business should be paying to tie into the system. So, uh, I got a quote from, uh, an engineering firm to work on this, and it's roughly $16,000.
Thank you. Counsel Dumont?
Yes, I wanted to say, um, I know that there was ongoing discussion at one point in time about what the town's doing with their impact fees, so I like to see that this is a, a step that we're taking to move beyond that to something that can be more malleable as we need it. Do you envision, if you, if we institute a, a, um, a system charge fee, a new system charge fee, that it's gonna be an average per-home cost that it's gonna be? Do you, do you think it'll change depending on what the type of structure is, the area of town, anything like that?
I, I think what's gonna happen is we're going to look at all our assets. We'll take the sewer system, for example. And then we'll look at how many units or what is on the system, and then determine what the cost of what that impact of what that structure is on the sewer system. And, and then that will be what will be charged for a single family home or versus a, you know, supermarket. It'll all be dependent on what their water consumption is.
Able to extract from the data that you have.
Yes, yes, so there'll be a lot of math done on this, on this one.
Everybody's favorite subject. Thank you.
Any other questions? Counsel Blackstone?
When we expand like the sewer system, does it come in, in fairly large chunks, or does it come in pretty small chunks? I, I'm thinking Steve had a consultant who thought that if we extended the sewer further up Main Street, it would allow higher density housing there and could be helpful to the community. And is that something where our sewer system has some extra capacity anyway, or is it?
We have capacity, uh, to add on more. We're at about 50% capacity right now.
Okay, so you have to buy in big chunks, basically, right?
Well, I mean.
Or are you intentionally, I have 50%?
Um, I, I think right now, it's kind of hard, because we haven't had any major developments come in to put a huge strain on our services for the sewer system. Um, I do see an anticipation of probably, on the water system now, you're gonna see, um, 100 units come in from, uh, because we're tying in Moody Point. You're also looking at the top of the hill there where there's another 70 units coming in of, uh, you know, single-family and, and duplexes and those kind of things.
Right.
That's where we're seeing it now, but we haven't seen any huge add-ons anywhere.
Seeing no other questions, if you could call the roll, please. Counsel Dumont?
Aye.
Counsel Sanders?
Aye.
Counsel Blackstone?
Aye.
Counsel Brabec?
Aye.
Counsel Kiper?
Aye.
Counsel Conley?
Aye.
Counsel Weinstein?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero. One more for you. Resolution 2020-2021-45 is the Water Treatment Plant Integration Programming Services, and I would accept a motion to approve that.
I will make a motion to approve Resolution 2020-2021-45, Water Treatment Plant Integration Programming Services.
I will second that.
The, as everyone knows, we're actually constructing a, uh, brand-new water treatment facility to treat the, um, water from the McIntosh well and the Tucker well to remove the arsenic and manganese. The, uh, project is a very large project, and the integration services is the software and the hardware, and the programming that actually runs the facility. And the way the, um, the specs were written, which this is the specs for it, in one part, the integration services was written one way, and another part, it was written another way, so the contractors could not bid on it. So when looking back at the bids, there was no bids for the integration services. So we're missing that in, so the contractor can't do it unless we figure out what to do. Now, normally, if it was a construction piece where you're building something, we would just do it by change order. But where it's a technical thing where the contractor wouldn't have anything to do with it, I'm proposing that we pull it out of the contract. We've already got two, uh, pricing from a couple different firms, and we, I'm recommending the lower price on it. Wright Pierce has, uh, said that they will do a no-cost contract with them. They will not mark it up at all, and they will hand administrating the contract. So this does save the town money, because we avoid the markup from the contractor, roughly 5 to 10%. It also makes it better because I'll be able to work directly with the integrator to make sure we get the product that we want.
Counsel Dumont?
Can you, um, put this into physical terms for me? So when you, we talk about the actual product that we're gonna have, is this like how at the water treatment facility right now, you can control everything off of iPads, you have the sensors, the data points on the boards?
That's exactly what it is. It's, it's the heartbeat of the whole system. It runs the plant, and we can operate the plant through computers and iPads and, and that kind of thing.
Thank you.
Counsel Conley?
Are there any, um, any kind of legal or, or risks to kind of pulling something out of the contract and treating it separately?
There is no legal risk at all to it. We, this is something we do all the time.
Seeing no other questions, if you could call the roll, please. Counsel Dumont?
Aye.
Counsel Sanders?
Aye.
Counsel Blackstone?
Aye.
Counsel Brabec?
Aye.
Counsel Kiper?
Aye.
Counsel Conley? Counsel Weinstein?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero. Thank you. And then we have, um, one item on the table, and I would accept a motion to remove that item from the table. And that's ordinance number seven. It's a live music event license ordinance.
I'll make a motion to remove from the table ordinance number seven, dash 2020-2021. Establishing, I actually don't have the language on my side.
Amending chapter 18, establishing live shows and events license.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Uh, and so we need to vote on removing that from the table first. Um, so this is just a vote to remove it from the table, not to, not for or against. So if you could call the, well, are there any questions about removing it from the table? Okay, seeing none, if you could call the roll, please. Counsel Dumont?
Aye.
Counsel Sanders?
Aye.
Counsel Blackstone?
Aye.
Counsel Brabec?
Aye.
Counsel Kiper?
Aye.
Counsel Conley?
Aye.
Counsel Weinstein?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero. And so now, I would accept a motion to, um, approve ordinance number seven.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number seven, dash 2020/2021.
I'll second that.
Did you want to, or the chair?
I will give it to the chair of the committee, because I'm assuming you'll have an amendment to this ordinance. And which? Because you did, you need to amend the ordinance to reflect the changes you made in committee.
Got it, thank you, okay. So, um, I will make a motion to amend the ordinance to reflect the changes that were agreed upon by the ordinance oversight committee after April 28th meeting.
Is there a second?
Thank you.
Thank you. Did you want to speak to it? Or, yeah, okay, please.
So the committee met on the 28th. We took back the feedback, as I had said before, from the community, from Counselors Kiper and Sanders, what they had said. We went through the language, and if you take a look at the actual ordinance, you'll see the items in red that were struck and the items in red that were added. Couple of things to, uh, I really like to point out, um, we did include an appeal process. If folks disagree with the decision of the licensing board, they can appeal directly to the town council. So if anybody thought, for whatever reason, that there may be some sort of bias or concern, made by the licensing board, that you as an individual have a right to go before the full town council. As you work your way down into permits, um, we clarified language on point number two, erect banners above public ways. On point five, you'll see we Xed out dance exhibition. And I think one of the, um, more important ones that some folks were really concerned about was point seven, uh, a million-dollar insurance binder for organizations that are trying to be licensed. Um, we did update that to read, um, an insurance binder, but not specifically a million-dollar's worth of coverage. We struck point eight. Under fees, we added representing for a for-profit entity, so individuals who are operating a for-profit business or, or organization. So we're not trying to, uh, fee, you know, Johnny or Suzie who has a small nonprofit community development sort of program. We amended under the annual fee, uh, uh, the ability for the licensing board to waive annual fees if needed. And I think that was the bulk, unless the town manager wishes to correct me, or anybody on the committee?
No, I think that's it, yep. So, discussion. Counsel Sanders?
I just wanted to know, um, I still have a question, is that, on number four? The one with public demonstrations or protests on public property? I understand things like the Black Lives Matter protest, which is every Saturday, so you would expect them to have a license. My concern is this doesn't do anything about, let's call them pop-up demonstrations that happen because something happens nationally. A group of people end up in the town square, holding signs saying, I'm, you know, against this, or I'm in favor of that, that was spur of the moment, nobody planned it, it wasn't, I'll, I'll just say, it was like the George Floyd ones that happened the night that happened, and they were popping up all over the country. I'm just concerned that someone could use this ordinance and say, well, you all have to disperse because you don't have a permit. And we're, we're taking away the right to free speech and the right of assembly by, I feel, by doing this. By saying, well, you have to know seven days ahead of time that you're going to have this pop-up demonstration. So my concern is there's no language in here that would say that if you're having a public demonstration or protest that has been, I'm not sure how to word it, pre-planned, or you've scheduled it, as opposed to just people coming together to protest something.
That came up during our discussion, and did you want to speak to that?
Um, yeah, just because part of the, the discussion with that is we can't, or, we can't pass a law for everything.
Right.
And.
Sorry, can you repeat that just in here?
I'm sorry, we can't pass a law for everything.
Okay.
For a what-if.
Right.
And truly in those situations, that is, that's gonna be the judgment call of the per, of the individuals in charge at that point in time. The concern that came up was, understand that we've been talking a lot about the, the social movements of this past year. But by not having any regulations in place for any parades or protests, then you must allow every parade and protest in situations like that. So you could have, and I know Counsel Dumont brought up the, I'm trying to remember the organization.
Yeah, in Boston, there was a, um, a straight pride rally. I mean.
Those are, yeah.
It's.
And what we're asking is, I mean, it, do I see a, a police chief or, or manager or a fire chief stopping a protest that is reasonable that pops up? Absolutely not. And if there is, then that's a problem that the council or those who be need to address with the town manager at the time, who would then address it with the police chief at the time. That's more of a personnel issue there. This allows us to make sure those, if they want to continue to do so, that they're done safely. That we could have backup, that we could have, uh, the right amount of ambulance that may need be, may need to be there. Detour traffic that may need to happen, um, so we could do that safely. Again, and you did, and you see, and you did see that in situations where the, an individual may have overreacted when it comes to responding to those, and they were relieved of their duties for doing so, instead of doing it a, a different way. So I think that's, that's the key. There's a difference between the pop-up, which is emergency, versus a planned one. And yeah, and yeah, there will be times that you may, the, the chief may come in and say, you know what? That is truly a safety si- situation, and you do not have a permit. Come back and get a permit, and, you know, we'll let you make sure you do it safely. And that, that could always happen, because you, you, safety is the key in that, in that situation. If it, if it, if it's done because of free speech, that's a whole nother ballgame. If it's not, you know, if there's no damage being done, if there's no, the public safety's not jeopardized, and it was stopped, that's another ballgame. And that, that's, that goes to the policy sending side of that, and that, that comes from the council, the manager, to the, the decision maker there.
I understand, I just don't have concerns.
Yep.
Counsel Conley? Are we discussing the, um, we discussing the, um, the unamended parts of the bill, or are we just discussing the things that have been changed right now?
We're discussing.
The entire, the entire, um, ordinance with the, with the amendments.
You're discussing the amendments.
Just the amendment.
Just the amendments.
Just the amendments, okay.
Yeah.
The reason I brought it up is, is, um, it was mentioned that I had sent comments to, and I didn't see it being addressed in what I was pretty to, so that's why I brought it up.
The committee had a very hard time trying to s- decide what boxes we wanted to draw, because if you make one box and group certain things, you leave out everything else. And if you draw another box around that, you leave out everything else from there. I think it does go back to what Steve said, that most public officials, most public servants are well-educated. They're very able, they're, they're very easily able to see the difference between people coming together to discuss the murder of an in, of an individual that was wrong and horrific, versus folks coming out to, you know, burn stuff down as an act of protest. And one of the benefits of having the licensing board being these three individuals, these three leaders within town government, is that it's nimble, it can act quickly, so if somebody were to pop up and say, hey, you know, this, this bad act happened this morning, can we put something together? Those three individuals can come together and say, yes, let's, you can do it. You know, what are you expecting from people? Do you think you'll need safety officers down there? Do you think you'll need fire department down there?
Uh, just a comment about the, about the ordinance committee, is that we did, even, even if every comment, um, that both Counsel Kiper and Sanders made isn't incorporated into the amendments, they were all discussed. So every comment they made was discussed, yeah.
I just hope that that was a really important one, and I just wanted some clarification.
Counsel Kiper?
Um, I just wanted to bring up, well, a real-world application for the protest would be, you know, there was a group of students that walked out of the school to protest a firing of one of the, you know, super, or one of the administrators, and, you know, under this ordinance, they would have been each subject to a hundred-dollar fine. And I mean, while we can say that, yes, Chief Tru probably wouldn't enforce that, who knows what the next chief would do? So I would rather tackle the word protest, have that struck from the, um, and I can make that as a second, um, a separate, uh, you know, um, motion after we do this, but I just wanted to, while we're discussing it, bring that up. And I also am still skeptical of the solicit funds for charitable purposes. That's something that, you know, has really nothing to do with the rest of this ordinance, and I feel like we could tackle as a separate issue, you know, if like, if the chief came and said, hey, you know, Grandma Smith on 92 Riverbend just got fleeced for 10 grand by some door-to-door knocker, you know, who was claiming to work for Save the Children, I would totally be in favor of that, but I feel like we're creating, you know, paperwork for a bunch of people that have done nothing wrong. And I take a case in point, I give, um, a chat to Baroque Academy every year does a, um, you know, a, it's a auction for, to raise money for.
know, a, it's a auction for, to raise money for the poorer kids' scholarship funds. Now, they probably have kids going from forty different towns, you know, and if every town had this in their ordinance, then they'd have to go to every town and ask for permission to do it. Which I might be okay with if it was like a lifetime license, you know, if they only had to do it once, because it's, because it's the same people, you know, that are doing the fundraising generally, year after year. And I mean, while I don't think it's that hard, I mean, it just seems that, for people that are generally trying to do something that's out of the goodness of their heart, you know, like, do they really need a permit? And does it really apply to an ordinance about live music and events? I mean, I don't see that as having, really pertaining to the ish, the rest of the ordinance. It seems a little bit out of whack.
I'd like to clarify that this ordinance isn't necessarily just for live events and entertainment, this is an ordinance establishing a Licensing Board, of which would include licensing for live events. I get that there's a feeling that this was brought up, because originally it was discussed about noise ordinance specifically.
Yeah.
But I think a number of us on the committee agreed that a noise ordinance wasn't appropriate, and that a Licensing Board was the best way to do this, but the Licensing Board has other things in it as well that we need to consider for adoption.
And with that in mind, though, we, we are voting on these amendments, and so that would be, that would be a separate amendment.
So just a point of clarification, we're going to vote on the amendments, and then that will change the ordinance, and then we will discuss...
Yes.
That whole, and then make potentially other amendment changes, okay?
Exactly. So any other comments about these amendments? Seeing none, if you could call the roll.
Council Dumont?
Aye.
Council Sanders?
Aye.
Council Weinstein?
Aye.
Council Brabek?
Aye.
Council Kuiper?
Aye.
Council Conley?
Aye.
Council Weinstein?
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Now I will accept a motion to...
Sorry, you've already, the motion on the full ordinance is still there.
Oh, we did?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. I'm losing track.
Yep.
Thank you.
So are you discussing the ordinance as amended?
Now we are discussing, okay.
As amended, okay.
Thank you. So, Counselor Kuiper.
I would like to make a motion to strike the word Solicit Funds for Charitable Purposes from the amendment.
Is there a second? Is it? Okay. Discussion.
Just to be clear, I think in the English language, Solicit Funds mean anything. Solicit Funds for Charitable Purposes is a small subset of Solicit Funds, so you went to a small subset to a broad description.
Sorry, I'm sorry, I should have clarified, I meant, strike the word Solicit Funds for Charitable Purposes.
Oh, okay.
Sorry.
Thank you for that clarification. So is there any other discussion on that? I mean, I think, I will say that the, the committee discussed this also at length, and, and obviously, we, we, the committee kept it in, so, and, and felt that it was appropriate. That's my only comment.
I'll say, we, we didn't, we, we had issues. Councilor Brabek actually made a really good point, once she said, you know, talking about people's private financial situations, and that's not necessarily what we're trying to regulate or go after here, but it's trying to promote an air of legitimacy for organizations that are operating in town, so that if folks are trying to unscrupulously solicit funds from elderly or at-risk populations, that, you know, we have a way of going after those individuals, that somebody who wants to come into town to do an event or go door-to-door simply gets the permit from the Licensing Board, and that way there, if, you know, yeah, Granny Smith down the road calls up the police station, "Yep, they're a legitimate organization, they're reputable, you know, we can verify that, you shouldn't have any issues." I, I think, it's, I don't know how many bad actors are actually going to go out there to try to go through the process of getting a permit or a fee, that it's really going to, you know, cause any sort of detrimental harm. And I think for the organizations that are looking for that, you know, maneuverability in town will have the, the Licensing Board's going to say, "Yeah, you're, you're clear. You know, your Boy Scouts, we know that you're legitimate, we, you know, Food Pantries, we know that you're legitimate."
Counselor Blackstone.
Yeah. I really do not like that every single person that goes into an airport has to take their shoes off because one person had a bomb in their shoe. And I think that the idea that every single organization has to go get a permit because there's a chance that one person is going to do it wrong, is an approach like, "You go to the airport, you got to take your stupid shoes off, because once somebody tried to blow up a plane with their shoe."
Thank you. Counselor Kuiper.
Do you know how many people have been fraudulently persuaded to make donations that were found to be unscrupulous organizations in the last two years?
I don't, I knew Lieutenant Jordan did have some case studies the night of the committee meeting, but I don't, I don't, I'll top my head now.
Counselor Conley.
Is there a, is there an enforcement mechanism for this? Like, I know we do have a lot of, like, we do have a lot of folks that Solicit Funds for Charitable Purposes, you know, like you said, Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts and school groups and whatnot. If, if they fail to get a, a permit, then what? What happens to the Boy Scouts?
Did Lieutenant Jordan clarify that, when he said that the police would ask them to stop? And if they were an organization that was doing it, say, you know, "If you're legitimate, just go for the, go, just go get a permit from the Licensing Board." I, I think that if we're trying to promote this notion that we're going to hunt down everybody who's asking for donations for something, it, it's just, I think it's a little bit overblown.
Counselor Brabek.
Yeah. My concern is there, is that the penalty that says, "Any person, organization or corporation who violates any provision of this chapter shall be fined not less than a hundred dollars for each offense." So, I just feel like that opens us up for people to be annoyed that there's a demonstration downtown and turning them in for not having a permit, or annoyed that someone knocked on their door, even if it is legitimate. They didn't get a permit, so then they're getting fined, like, I just, that doesn't sit well with me.
If there's an issue with the penalty, you can always amend it, which I don't, there's already amendment on the table, so I'm not going to suggest this, to make one right now, but you can always just change shall to may.
Counselor Kuiper.
Would this make it illegal for someone on the street, let's say a homeless person or whatever, to solicit change from people walking by?
That's a First Amendment issue that's still in the court, so we do not have an answer for that.
Okay.
I mean, I'll just say, from my experience, I would imagine, even if I forgot to get a permit, like, again, as I said, I think in our last meeting, I'm often one of those people who's out there knocking on the door of Johnny Boston's, asking for funds for something, right? So for Berwick, or for, you know, who knows what. Now, is John going to call the police on me and check on me to make sure that I have a permit? My guess is no, right? Like, that's just not the way, you know, you know, we know the people in town. I'm going to go to Mike and I'm going to say, "Hey, can you give me a twenty-five-dollar gift certificate to the stone church?" And he's going to say, "Sure, Tony, I'll leave it at the bar for you." Like, that happens all the time. Do I think that's going to change by this, by passing this ordinance? Absolutely not. I mean, I can't imagine. If a stranger, hang on just a second, if, if someone that you don't know has that same question, and they don't have paperwork, and they don't have, they don't have a relationship with the business owner, you're going to say no. Or you're, or you have this, you know, you can call and say, like, "Is this legit?" As a business owner. I, I just, I guess I don't, I don't see the, I don't see the implications being as severe.
If I may, I was just thinking, this is a way to explain, any group that's, that's out knocking on doors or soliciting funds should give the police a heads up. We have no mechanism in government to tell somebody they should do something like that. We only have the ability to say, "You need to get a permit. This is why, this is why you're doing it." You're sort of encouraging people to, to get in touch, "Let us know you're doing it, you know you're legit, here's your permit." Because we can't, you know, we can't just, there's no legal way to say, you should, you know, it's a good thing to do that. We have to have some kind of, it's, it's the bureaucracy part of it. And, and again, and I don't want people to think this is a rarity, this happens, this permit happens in communities across the state. And if you look at it, and it goes not in front of a quick board like this, for, again, I'll use Dover, Dover has a list of permits that they have to issue with this every meeting, to the point it's just, it's ministerial after it's reviewed by the Police Department. But that takes much more time than having a, you know, a quick, "Hey, here's your license situation that you can do with a Licensing Board."
Counselor Blackstone.
Tony, your comments here suggest to me that you're saying we should pass laws, or whatever, regulations, that everyone should ignore, or, or that we're going to pass a bunch of regulations, ignore them. Right? That's your argument. We have a lot...
No, that's, that's not my argument at all.
Well, it's what it sounds like.
That's not my argument, no, no, not that we should be ignoring the argument.
You're saying, "We're going to pass regulations, and..."
I'm not saying I shouldn't follow those regulations, I'm just saying that that's not a situation that if someone didn't, so if the Girl Scouts didn't get a permit, are we going to start calling the police on them? No, I don't think so. That's what I'm saying. I'm not saying that they, that people shouldn't follow the regulations. I had the same question, and this goes back a bunch of years now, with our raffle, you know, when we instituted, you have to have a permit for a raffle. The same questions, the same concerns, that weren't really unfounded. So, I don't think that it, it stopped any charitable organization from having a legitimate raffle in town. Maybe there's a little bit more, you know, another hoop that you have to go through, I don't necessarily think that that's a negative thing. So no, I'm not saying that we should be ignoring the ordinances at all.
I mean, just looking at like, you know, the law of unintended consequences, and all the possibilities that could happen, which I think is important, and, you know, that we might have a future Town Manager or a future Chief of Police who takes these permits and these rules we're making to a point that we don't want them to now, I think that's important to keep in mind. And like, I mean, imagine if my charity was for, you know, preserving the history of, of the Nazis, right? And I've got a legitimate LLC, I go to the town, they have to give me the permit, you know what I mean? And now the town is sanctioning the, you know, soliciting of funds for Nazis, you know?
But we'd have to anyways.
Well, I can say, but at least this way, it wouldn't be town sanctioned.
I just want to say that anything, this is the First Amendment discussion on anything like this. For example, the parade, if we sanction one, we sanction all. If you want to, and we discuss this by showing the community of Charlottesville. If you allow one, you have to allow the other. And this is in any situation when it comes to government. We're not sanctioning, we're just allowing. It's, any of the, any situation here, any situation when it comes to anything we do, we have to follow the rules like that. At least this way, we know it's out there, we can prepare for it, we can make sure they follow certain guidelines that we can set forward. And the other part of this is, if you're concerned about the authority of the Manager and the Chief, there's an appeal to the council, duly elected. The only reason why it went to the Manager and Chief and Chair first is so we could act without having to go to the council and waiting two or three weeks before something goes. It's easy to say, "This is an emergency, let's call these three people in," or a quorum of this, and either grant it or not, and go from there. That's, that's why, there, there is an appeal. It's not just those two individual, and I, I know we're just, you keep focusing on the Chief and the, the Manager, but there's three people on the board, and there's appeal of that decision. And, you know, an appeal of that decision is the voters don't vote, the councilors don't do the right thing.
So we have an amendment on the table to, basically to strike Solicit Funds for Charitable Purposes, and so are there any other comments on the amendment? So seeing none, if you could call the roll, please.
Council Dumont?
Nay.
Council Sanders?
Aye.
Council Blackstone?
Aye.
Council Brabek?
Nay.
Council Kuiper?
Aye.
Council Conley?
Aye.
Council Weinstein?
Nay.
Motion passes four to three. So now, so that was amended. Counsel Brabek?
Can I make a movement to make another amendment?
Yes, you can.
Okay. I would like to make a movement to amend point one thirty-four penalty to change the word shall to may. Do I need to read the whole sentence? So it's like, may be fined, as opposed to shall be fined.
I'll second that.
Before we start with discussion, can I ask you a question?
Me?
Yes.
Yeah.
So is that enforceable? Like, how, how does that, if we say it may be fined, that, is that...
We have that judgment now.
Okay.
If you say shall, we have to give you a fine. If we say may, we can say, "Here's a warning."
Okay. That was my only concern. Counsel Brabek.
Yeah, my thought there is that it just opens up that the Licensing Board can then have a discussion about, like, okay, well, was this a safety issue, or, yeah, can we just issue a warning if, if it turns out no one was...
Let me clarify, that is not the Licensing Board's duty, that's the enforcement officer's duty at that point in time.
Interesting.
That's like any noise ordinance, any speeding ticket, anything else. So that, that does not fall on, on the Licensing Board.
Any, Counsel Kuiper?
That would be the police, I assume, okay.
Correct. So it would be at their discretion. If it's life safety, fire, whoever has the authority to give issue fines.
Any other comments? Counsel Brabek.
I will say, I don't love that it's up to the individual, you know, one person's discretion to decide whether or not to give someone a fine, but I do think I'd rather have that person have discretion than have them be required to give a fine, if those are my choices.
And it's typical process, you get fined, you don't like it, you go to court, so.
So seeing no other comments, so again, this is for the amendment, for this amendment to change the word shall to may, and I would, if you could call the roll, please.
Council Dumont?
Aye.
Council Sanders?
Aye.
Council Blackstone?
Aye.
Council Brabek?
Aye.
Council Kuiper?
Aye.
Council Conley?
Aye.
Council Weinstein?
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero. So now we have the ordinance as amended. Counsel Sanders.
I'd like to make amendment to one thirty-three, a written application for a permit must be submitted seven days prior to the date of the event. I think for some cases where you said you could call a quick meeting and you could issue, you know, that permit sooner, does this need to change?
Sure. How about, or, seven days prior to the date of the event, or upon, let me think of the way to word this. Upon, seven days prior, or upon, I'm trying to think, is it request or action of a quorum of the board? That way, if you can get two together, you can have it.
I was thinking again of the pop-up issues, you know?
Upon, upon act... This may be... Easy, this may be suspended by a quorum of the board.
Okay. So it's the amendment I'd like to make.
Is there a second?
Can you clarify, where was that language being inserted, just after?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Eddie?
Just for the exact wording, this may be suspended by a quorum of the Licensing Board.
Thank you.
So Steve, so the whole thing would, would read, a written application for permit must be submitted seven days prior, this may be suspended, and then the application shall contain, or would it be after?
Nope, right there.
Okay.
Seeing no questions or comments, if you could call the roll, please. Counsel Dumont?
Aye.
Counsel Sanders?
Aye.
Counsel Blackstone?
Aye.
Counsel Brabek?
Aye.
Counsel Kiper?
Aye.
Counsel Conley?
Aye.
Counsel Weinstein?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero. So now we have the ordinance as amended. Counsel Kiper?
I promise this is my last amendment. I'd like to make amendment to 134 to take the word protest out of conduct parades, processions, festivals, or races, walkathons, demonstrations, or, yeah, take out the word protest, and then on public property or highway.
Sorry, where is that?
130, number four.
Oh, 130, okay.
Did I say that right?
You said 134.
I meant 130.
Section four.
Section four, sorry. 130, section four. Just the word protest out. Or I guess it would have to be or protest.
I'm sorry, that's not now, section three. You already amended to-
Oh, right, okay.
Oh.
So, yeah, 130, section three, strike the word protest, said it would read, conduct parades or processions, festivals or races, walkathons, or public demonstrations on public property or highway.
Is there a second?
I'll second that. And then I have a question. Okay. How did the committee define demonstration versus protest, where they have both of those in there? What would be the difference between the two?
I don't think we officially defined demonstration. You know it when you see it.
Counsel Conley?
So, so demonstration could be a protest of some kind? Like those, like, the Venn diagram of those, there could be a fair bit of overlaps.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, sorry, I was thinking demonstration a totally different way, as in like a demonstration of like acrobatics or something. So just to clarify, that's what I thought demonstration, like, you know, karate demonstration. So can I amend my amendment, since we haven't voted on it yet?
You could. I don't believe you can. I think it's big enough that you need to withdraw your motion. You need to withdraw your second. You need to withdraw your motion.
I'll withdraw my second.
I withdraw my amendment?
Now I'll make a motion.
I would make a motion to remove 130, section three, remove the words, public demonstration or protest.
So is there a second?
I'll second it to allow discussion.
So is there a discussion?
I'll just speak up, I guess. I think the licensing board, I think the committee didn't amend that language because they think the licensing board has a vested interest in ensuring that if events are happening in town, that officials are aware, the police are aware, the fire are aware. I mean, the Black Lives Matter processors, it's been every single Saturday since, just informing the town that they're going to be out there on a regular schedule every single Saturday is really not the end of the world. And I think we already covered impromptu events that are happening. Most people know this is a one-time thing for this immediate, you know, if it continues, we can go from there, you know?
Counsel Kiper?
I mean, are we legally allowed to stop someone from protesting? I mean, isn't there constitutional right to?
Not necessarily. You have the, we also have the right to make sure people are safe. And by require, this kind of standards has stood up for years. You're not stopping somebody's First Amendment, you're asking them to make sure it's safely done.
I'll just add a comment that I, I mean, personally, I, I think this is one of the important, one of the more important pieces of this ordinance. And again, just an example from ages ago, we did a walk, a walk for the, I forget what, how we, a walk for the land or something, when we were working, we were gonna, the town was going to purchase the carpenter land. And we did a walk in support of that, and we had, I don't know, a hundred, a hundred people, a hundred and fifty people, something like that, felt like more. And we walked from the library to the carpenter land. We informed the police that we were doing it because we had kids, and it just made sense, and it was the right thing to do. And I absolutely think that that, that should happen.
Can I add to that?
Please.
When I was a bus driver at UNH all those years ago, the, I think it was just after the election of President Trump, there was a very large demonstration on campus where a lot of the organizations, minority groups, everybody who felt disaffected by the results of the election, informed administration, police in Durham, and at the campus, that they were going to do a walk. They said it was going to take, I think it was like an hour that they had scheduled for, and they gave them the exact route where it was happening. This was organized two days after the election, told them what was happening, where it was happening, easy. So we knew when we were driving our buses, when we had to pull over, let them go through. There had to be like three or four hundred students and faculty involved. Nobody was trespassed against, nobody had any sort of, they weren't told that they couldn't exercise their First Amendment rights, but there was a vested interest in public safety because of how impactful it was.
Counsel Kiper?
I think both of those would have been covered under procession. That sounds like a procession to me. So I guess I'm just like, really a big fan of people being able to protest, whether they agree with us or not. And I think that people being able to, you know, randomly throw the British tea into the water without a permit is a, is something I, I think is a really important thing. And, I mean, I think if someone's going to have a protest and we went to shut down because they didn't have a permit, I think they'd have grounds to sue for constitutional rights. I think that's already happening in Newfield where they tried to shut down the, they tried to shut down the anti-mask protests at the governor's house, and, you know, the ACLU was right in there suing the state of the town in Newfield. So, I mean, I, I just don't think that, yeah, I don't think we should be permitting protests.
Thank you.
Unless it's a procession.
Any other comments? Counsel Dumont?
Actually, Counsel Conley raised her hand just to talk to you.
I, I agree with you, Counsel Kiper, that there's a, that there's a very strong sort of, you know, freedom of speech kind of, you know, of concern, just in general, like, you know, not wanting to take any kind of, any kind of steps that would even be perceived as attempting to curtail that. As I look at this, and I look at the way that the ordinance was constructed, it seems to me as though, to the extent that, that, that any kind of large, you know, protest, whether or not people are moving from one place to another or not, or they're just standing around, you know, holding Black Lives Matters signs or what have you, to the extent that there's a possibility that they may encumber public services, and they may, you know, create situations in which, in which our public services need to, need to ensure people's safety, that that, like, by virtue of the fact that there are large groups of folks, regardless of the perspective that they hold, it feels like a, getting a permit for something like that feels like a fairly reasonable thing, I think, to do. And clearly, I'm a little conflicted about it myself.
Counsel Dumont?
Yeah, I would say, I agree with what you're saying, because, I mean, if you read the way this is written, public property or highway, the town should be aware if somebody's organization is going to choke up downtown Main Street, for whatever reason. They should be aware. If they know it's going to happen, if it's an impromptu event, call the town and just let them know. It'll happen. It'll get taken care of. But even if it's going to happen right out here, in front of Town Hall, we should still be aware. Is the building going to be blocked off for whatever reason? How many people are going to be there? I, I don't understand why, when we're looking at a licensing board, it's a matter of, every single thing is going to be the worst-case scenario every single time. It's not wrong to look at the potential ramifications for passing new ordinances and new laws and those enforcement structures. I don't think that there's anybody, whether it's here, Dover, who are actively going to try to subvert constitutionally guaranteed rights. It's a matter of ensuring that there's public safety and that there's notice, so that if there's an emergency, we can respond to it.
Counsel Kiper?
The problem is that there's just no language in here specifying how many people. So you could have one person, or you could have a hundred. You know, Larry, the guy that puts on the Black Lives Matter, has had any number from three to, I'd say maybe twenty, you know. You know, if it said a hundred people, if you were expecting a hundred people at your protest, you know, I could kind of understand that, but I just, again, I'm not in favor of limiting people's ability to protest.
If I may, because I just, just, I looked out at the, those who may have to enforce it. And we know that if you say a hundred, somebody says, go home. Okay, you don't need it. That's why, it's much like Counsel Dumont said earlier, when you see it, you know it situation. So if you have like, if you say it's a protest of one, but that one person is screaming, yelling at people right in their face in the middle of downtown, and he says, well, that's a protest, you can't, you can't stop me. Well, yeah, we can, there needs to be safety issues there. If it's a hundred people who just hold a vigil somewhere, and it's peaceful, you can't, if you put a number on it, you open up more can of worms. So I think that's the, that's the, that's why we don't write ordinances extremely specific. Because you, then there's, you, the more specific you make it, the more, and this is for every ordinance, I'm just trying to explain it blankly. The more specific you make it, the more loopholes you give it. It's not the other way around, which you may think. The other thing is, enforcement is that much more difficult, and it doesn't give us any gray area. In enforcing ordinances, you do need some gray area, so you could deal with those situations, like, you know, well, is this, is this a protest? You gotta, you gotta, you gotta trust the people who are going to be enforcing it. And if there is something wrong with the law, the council has the right to amend it at any given point. If they find something, like, if there is a, something comes up, and they don't like it, you have the right to amend it. So you can address it when it comes up. It's not, this is not a, it's not like a chatter amendment that only could be voted on by the people once a year. This is a, the ordinance that is done by the council.
Counsel Kiper?
In the same sort of vein, I think if we had a protest out here in the last year that was a number of people, that was a threat to public safety, I would be maybe in favor of this. In the same manner, if that happened, we could also add the word protest to this amendment later down, later on down the line, if we find that we're having excessive numbers of large-scale, out-of-control protests. I just, it's never happened here. I have no anticipation of it ever happening here. And again, I'm just not, because of the law of unintended consequences, I'm not a fan of creating rules that are, you know, have this gray area where potentially, you know, someone trying to exercise their constitutional right is hindered.
And I completely agree with that. Nobody should ever hinder somebody's constitutional right. On the legal side of that, if you amend a law to react to somebody's actions, that actually opens more of a door to constitutional rights, because you're responding to that individual, versus, look, this is the rules we have on the books. If you want to follow them, you know, come get, do the right thing, this is what's going to happen. If you don't, this could happen. So, I mean, that's the, that's, and again, this is for, and I'm not saying this for this one, because this is a decision, I'm saying procedurally, this is what you should consider while passing an amendment ordinances.
Is there any other discussion on this amendment? Seeing none, if you could call the roll, please. Counsel Dumont?
Nay.
Counsel Sanders?
So just to be clear, a nay means we don't want to take out the public protest?
Exactly.
Okay.
Nay.
Counsel Blackstone?
Aye.
Counsel Brabek?
Aye.
Counsel Kiper?
Aye.
Counsel Conley?
Nay.
Counsel Weinstein?
Nay.
Motion fails, Ward three.
Point of order?
Yes, please.
We adjourn at nine and K.
You do.
It is eight forty.
So-
Thank you.
The rest of your agenda.
Well, we would vote to. We'll deal with that shortly. So now we have the ordinance, and I think you jinxed us. I'm just saying.
I second that.
A hundred percent.
So now we have the ordinance as amended.
Yes.
Is there any further discussion on the ordinance as amended? Counsel Kiper?
Sorry, I'll try to keep it quick. Just looking at the ordinance, if business in town is looking to get a permit for like outside music, how are the terms of that outside music in terms of day, week, hours? How is, is that just determined by the board? Case by case?
Yep.
And they can do anything, or?
That's, yep.
Can I ask a clarifying question on that?
Please.
I assume that you, those allowances would fall with what they were zoned for, what was-
Correct. You'd have to follow the law. You can't, you can't, and it says that, you can't circumvent planning law, you know, zoning law. So, no, it's just to put the other public safety items in.
I am not seeing any other comments. The only thing that I wanted to say about this ordinance, we had received quite a few letters in, in opposition to the ordinance, and then we received several, quite a few letters in support of the Stone Church. And I just want to say that this is, while it stemmed from that, from the, from the music and from the outdoor shows that are, were happening at the Stone Church, this addresses so much more. And so I think that this, obviously, I mean, I'm in support of this ordinance as we had amended it through the committee. I certainly support it as we've amended it this evening. And I think this is the right direction for, for the town. The only other item that I wanted to comment on, again, this, one of the, one of the comments in the letters was that somehow, you know, the pandemic is over and it's business as usual again, and we shouldn't be supporting our local businesses. And I just couldn't disagree more. I don't think that, I think that our, the businesses in town suffered so much over the last year, and, and I don't think it's going to be business as usual for a little while. Maybe I'm a pessimist, but I think, I think that there's some time, and I think whatever we can do to support our businesses, we should be doing. So, that was my only comment. Seeing no other hands, so if you could call the roll, please. And so this, and so, and just to be clear, this is on the ordinance as amended, so in its entirety. Counsel Dumont?
Aye.
Counsel Sanders?
Aye.
Counsel Weinstein?
Aye.
Counsel Brabek?
Aye.
Counsel Kiper?
Aye.
Counsel Conley?
Aye.
Counsel Weinstein?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero. Thank you. We are moving on. We have one, one appointment, and I should have asked someone how to say her name. So it's Valerie To Catley, I hope that's right, for the Arts and Tourism Committee. And I would accept a motion to approve that application.
Make a motion to approve the application of Valerie To Catley, to the Arts and Tourism Commission, with a term ending in December of 2023.
I will second that.
Any comments? Seeing none, if you could call the roll, please. Oh, sorry. Counsel Conley?
Did someone put her forward for this, for this position, like?
She was one of the, I'm sorry.
Please.
She was one of the participating artists. I believe she was at your place, John. And her background is, is exactly what we're looking for, and I'm thrilled that this will bring us up to full seven members of our committee.
Counsel Conley?
Thank you, Counsel Sanders.
Most applicants for boards, nobody nominates them. They, they apply, and we, then the council then reviews the application.
I think I was just looking to see if anyone knew her.
Okay, yeah.
Yes.
Thank you. If you could call the roll, please. Counsel Dumont?
Counsel Dumas?
Aye.
Counsel Sanders?
Aye.
Counsel Blackstone?
Aye.
Counsel Brabek?
Aye.
Counsel Kuiper?
Aye.
Counsel Conley?
Aye.
Counsel Weinstein? Aye. Motion passes seven zero. Thank you. Now, we have, um, a, a few resolutions in the first reading, but there's one that we're going to ask to suspend the rules, so can we do, go out of order and do that one first, since we have some people?
Sure.
Who might want to go home? Um, I'm assuming that's Resolution 2020, 2021 dash forty-nine paving improvement?
It is.
Um, should I read it first?
Yes.
Okay, sorry, I will read it first. Um, whereas the town has extended the paving contract with Bell and Flynn LLC for another year with no increase, and whereas the following roads are on the road management plan scheduled for this year, Gonnit Drive, Smith Garrison Road, Stevens Drive, Cushing Road, Bay Road, and Barbary Coast Road, and whereas the town budgeted a hundred and sixty thousand dollars toward this expenditure in the operating budget, and an additional two hundred and fifty thousand dollars was budgeted in the Capital Reserve Fund to fund the road management plan that was adopted. The Capital Reserve Fund has a balance of three hundred and six thousand five hundred and fourteen dollars on July first, the Municipal Transportation Fund had a balance of two hundred and forty-four thousand one hundred and seventy-six dollars on July first. Now therefore be it resolved by the Newmarket Town Council that the town manager enter into any agreements with Bell and Flynn LLC with a dollar amount not to exceed five hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars, with one hundred and sixty thousand dollars coming from the operating budget, two hundred and eighty thousand dollars coming from the Capital Reserve Fund, and ninety-five thousand coming from the Municipal Transportation Fund. First reading, May fifth, 2021. And, um, I would accept a motion to suspend the rules and, to adopt the...
I'll make a motion to suspend the rules and adopt Resolution 2021 slash 2022 dash forty-nine paving improvements.
I'll second that.
Thank you. And our, Rick Malaski is here to discuss.
Thank you. Real quickly, the reason we're asking to suspend tonight is the, obviously, the water main project is going on throughout town, and specifically to Cushing Road and a small portion of Bay Road. Shaun's been working very hard for the last two weeks to get RD to approve us transferring the funds from the contract, for the contract into ourselves, to pave the road under the town contract, to save the town a lot of money. We're under contract with Bell and Flynn until June thirtieth of this year, obviously. I put everything in while we were coming here, because I'd be just back next month to do it again. That's why we're doing this. So just to be clear, on the funds you're approving, nothing will be removed, reduced, uh, uh, withdrawn until July one, other than the funds from the Municipal Transportation Fund. We're gonna pave five hundred feet of Bay Road and Cushing Road, reclaim it, and it's only gonna cost the town about thirty-two thousand dollars, where typically that would cost us about a hundred and seventy thousand dollars, um, under the current contract, utilizing our contractor. If the company that had the contract did it, that number would have been up three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. It's a, it's a huge savings to the town. So what I'm looking for is just to approve extending the contract with Bell and Flynn for another year, there's no increase, and approving to withdraw these funds come July one, um, they won't be utilized other than the Municipal Transportation Fund, because the funds we had for this paving season have been expended. So I'm gonna have to spend about thirty-two thousand, the rest will come from RD. Rule development.
Counsel Dumas?
Like to say, I, I think this is great, especially getting that year extension, um, this is really kind of a stroke of luck that we're not seeing our prices skyrocket right now, so I just hope that this, uh, good fortune can hold out. I thank you guys for getting it done so quickly.
Seeing no other comments, if you could call the roll, please.
Counsel Dumas?
Aye.
Counsel Sanders?
Aye.
Counsel Blackstone?
Aye.
Counsel Brabek?
Aye.
Counsel Kuiper?
Aye.
Counsel Conley? Counsel Weinstein? Aye. Motion passes seven zero.
Thank, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Ten-minute warning for the town council.
Okay. I can talk fast.
You can't blame me for that.
I do blame you. All right. Resolution 2020, 2021 dash forty-six, a resolution relating to authorizing the town manager to enter into an agreement for hosted PBX services and telephone equipment lease. Whereas the town's hosted PBX service contract expired last year and is on a month-to-month contract, and the current telephones are old and have some, and some have failed during the past year, and whereas the town's hosted PBX system and telephone handsets are used extensively for business operations, and whereas after evaluating proposals and acquiring answers to follow-up questions, the Director of Finance and Administration recommends the proposal submitted by TSE Digital Voice of Bedford, New Hampshire. Now therefore be it resolved by the Newmarket Town Council that the town council authorizes the town manager to enter into an agreement with TSE Digital Voice in the amount not to exceed thirty-six thousand dollars for a three-year period and continuing thereafter on an annual basis, utilizing the communication budget funds from each department, May fifth, 2021. The next item is Resolution 2020, I'm sorry, opening it, uh, 2021 dash forty-seven, naming of certain street in town, seventy-seven Hershey Lane subdivision. Whereas it is under the purview of the Newmarket Town Council to name streets in town, and whereas Chinburg Properties of Newmarket, New Hampshire, has made recommendations for names of public ways in their new developments, and whereas the town of Newmarket E-911 Coordinator has signed off on the following name, now therefore be it resolved by the Newmarket Town Council that the following public way in the town of Newmarket will have the following name, Tanner Circle, and that's new road off Hershey Lane near Darrell Drive, located in the seventy-seven Hershey Lane subdivision at the proposed junction of Class Five and Class Six portions of Hershey Lane, first reading, May fifth, 2021. And lastly, we have Resolution...
I have it, you want me?
Sure.
Resolution 2020 dash twenty-one dash forty-eight, fence installation at Splash Pad Area Preschool Playground on Leo Landros Field, whereas Recreation Department seeks the town to authorize proceeding with the installation as quoted by Glasgow Anco fifteen Banfield Ports of New Hampshire, uh, in the amount of twenty-eight thousand six hundred and fifty dollars for two block vinyl coated chain link fences that will surround the perimeters of both the new Splash Pad Park Area as well as preschool playground area, both of which are located at Leo, Leo Randos Field, whereas Recreation Department is requesting twenty thousand six hundred and seventy-five dollars from the Capital Reserve balance of one hundred seventy thousand one hundred and sixty-seven dollars. Now therefore be it resolved that the Newmarket Town Council does hereby approve, uh, the withdrawal funds not exceed twenty thousand six hundred and seventy-five dollars from Newmarket Department Capital Reserve Fund for the purpose of installing two block vinyl coated chain link fences of Leo Randos Field that state above and authorize town manager to execute any contracts, POs, change orders, and agreements associated with this project. First reading, May fifth.
Thank you.
No discussion is first reading.
Um, Counsel Blackstone?
I just wanted to point out that there, the Splash Pad people are looking for donations for supplemental work, and I can tell you that if you make a donation, they send you this really nice thank you card. And I would encourage anyone who is interested to donate to the Splash Pad.
Fantastic, thank you. Um, moving on, we have, uh, there was some correspondence to the town council, which were included in our packets. And those were all regarding, uh, the Stone Church. And then any closing comments? Counsel Dumas? Well, I got things to say. Um, just a couple, a couple of quick things. Um, I wanted to mention that the, um, town, there were two cleanups that happened this year, one was sponsored through the Conservation Commission, and the other, sorry, the other was, uh, uh, something that I've worked on, uh, for the last several years, and between those, so the Conservation Commission did a week-long cleanup, um, and kind of, you know, do your own neighborhood type of thing, and then the one that, um, I, uh, organize is a little bit different, we kind of focus on the, on the major throughways in town. Between those two groups, I think we had about seventy, I don't have a total number, but about seventy volunteers in that week. We, uh, are working on compiling the, the mileage that was cleaned up during that time, but I can tell you all of Grant Road, um, up to Doe Farm Lane, so from, from one fifty-two all the way to Doe Farm, um, all of Ashvamp Road, uh, a huge section of Route one oh eight, um, from Abishan all the way to the, uh, golf course, um, uh, Spring Street, uh, like all, all these, all sorts of, the, um, the boat launch, um, off of Piscassic, so just, uh, so many streets were clean, and there was a huge difference made. New Road was another one, um, and I did get, uh, have a comment from a gentleman who lives along New Road who appreciated the cleanup that we had done, um, even though littering continues to be a problem, and it will continue to be a problem. So, uh, I just want to thank everyone who was involved, I want to thank the DPW, uh, for their assistance in the police department, um, town administration, it's really a, a group effort, and it's, it's great to see. And then the only other comment that I want, did you, oh, no, sorry, okay. Um, the only other comment that I wanted to make, um, kind of quickly, and I think maybe we can discuss more at our next meeting, is, um, I have asked, uh, the town manager to, um, to talk a little bit more about, uh, just the rules of our meetings, and so to make sure that we, um, are operating effectively. I think I felt after our meeting two weeks ago, that, um, you know, I didn't do the greatest job managing the meeting, and I think, uh, people were talking out of turn, and it was hard for us to, to, uh, reach a consensus on the, on the ordinance. I think that tonight went much better. Uh, we were, um, you know, rate people have to raise their hands, and we have to, you have to be called on by the, by the chair, otherwise it just gets chaotic, it gets chaotic. I think for the people watching, it gets chaotic, for the people who are sitting up here, it certainly gets chaotic for me to manage. So I appreciated everyone, um, even, you know, it's, uh, we had a lot of different opinions, and we were able to work through them all tonight, it took some time, but we were able to get through it, so I, um, appreciate that.
Yeah, what I may do is, uh, I'll, I'll come up and review the rules, and also parliamentary procedure with the council. I'll also show you, so find two meetings, one not to follow, and one to follow, and how to conduct them, the council is, uh, in a, in a public meeting, so. So you can watch it on YouTube or...
Thank you, I think that would be really helpful. And we didn't talk about committee assignments, so, um, I guess they are, well, we have two choices. We can extend, I'm gonna stop talking, trying to talk so fast. We can extend our, uh, meeting past nine o'clock, so we can vote to do that, uh, and then kind of hash out the committee assignments tonight, or we can, um, wait and keep them as-is for now, and discuss at our next meeting, and it's whatever people want to do. Counsel Kuiper? Okay. Then I would accept a motion to, uh...
Suspend the rules to go past nine o'clock, do you want us to put it time certain? Because if not, you could be here till midnight.
Yeah, I think that we can, um, continue till nine-thirty, suspend the rules to continue until, no later than nine-thirty, um, and then we can revisit it if need be.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Thank you. So I had sent along... Oh, oh.
I was just raising my hand to say, I agreed with what you sent along, it looked good to me.
Perfect. Uh, a couple of comments, though, that I wanted to make about that, is that one of the things that I did was I, I looked at the charter, I talked to the town manager about this, um, the only, uh, committee required by charter to have an alternate is the CIP. Nothing else is required, um, by charter. That said, you know, it's nice to have, it's nice to have a, a second to the, an alternate to the budget committee, it's nice to have an alternate to the planning board, um, but it increases the workload. So I removed those from the responsibilities, uh, in my, in the proposed, uh, items there. I I changed the ordinance oversight committee, I added, um, that to Katana's, uh, Counsel Conley's, um, responsibilities, and so I took Counsel Brabek off of that, to, to try to even things, because I think that that's part of the problem, is that it's not, uh, it's not really equitable at the moment. So Counsel Brabek had like four, um, different committees that she was on, so, um, and then I will also point out that, you know, the planning board is a hu, I think is probably the biggest commitment, um, as far as committees go. Excuse me? Exactly, yeah, it's, there are a lot of materials, and it's more than just, you know, there's like legal issues that have to be considered, so, um, so I, I think that having that as a standalone committee makes a lot of sense. So that's my proposal. Are people comfortable with that? Counsel Kuiper?
Just one question, in the event that, um, you know, Zach couldn't attend a budget committee, could one of us, if we're not the designated alternate, go? No?
No.
Okay.
Because only the person who's designated by the council can speak for the council.
Okay.
And I would say, um, Counsel...
I'm always just curious whether that included you or our...
Yeah.
Yeah, only the, the chair and vice chair have no more authority than what the council gives them. Again, though, if a board member, if, if the council rub's not there, the staff, I mean, myself or the, uh, finance, Director of Finance Administration is usually hot, so, it, the reason why the, the coun, the council school board has a seat on those budget committees anyways, is they're supposed to have all the knowledge about the budget, but we have staff that does that, so.
Counsel Brabek?
Yeah, I was gonna say to that point, I was the alternate on the budget committee, I only went once when you got married, and unless you're planning on doing that again, so far you haven't needed, um, anyone to fill in, and I will say, I, I did not feel helpful, because I hadn't been to prior meetings, and so I didn't have the past knowledge that, um, I was glad to be there and be as helpful as I could be, but without being there every week, it's hard to be an alternate.
Right.
Could I echo that?
Sure.
My first year on the council, I sat on the budget committee, and I was the alternate to the planning board. I got like forty pages of documents every single week, and the one time that I had to sit in, there was so much pre-work added to it, I had to spend the, like, week going up just to get a basic idea. So I, I completely agree, sometimes you feel completely out of your element, if it's not something you do all the time.
Yeah, I agree, I, and I have, for however long, it hasn't been very long, just a few months, I've served as the alternate for the planning board, and I prepare as though I, you know, as, as though you're not going to be there, and I might have to step in, and so, and it, it's a, it's a lot of work, so, um...
Yeah, and that history goes back years and that stuff.
Right. I will say, um, just one other comment, is that as, as counselors, we can, probably should, attend any meeting, um, you know, at, at any time. So you don't have a vote, you don't have a say, you're there as a member of the public, but, um, whether that's, you know, tuning in on Zoom or on Facebook, or, um, uh, or attending live, I think that it's really beneficial, so, um, it was certainly beneficial for me on the pla, just, I hadn't, I hadn't forced myself to go to a planning board in a, meeting in a very, very long time, so that this, it forced me to, and it, it's been, uh, really interesting, I've learned a lot. Counsel Brabek?
Are we supposed to have a vote on these committees?
Depends on what, with the law. Planning Board, Budget Committee, yes, Conservation, no.
Okay, that's what I was thinking, I was like, oh, I never vote.
Yeah, no.
Okay, good.
Yeah, every meeting's different, every committee's different.
Like to know the rules.
Counsel Kuiper, did you have your head up?
No, no.
All right, then we, do we need to vote on this?
You do.
Okay, so then I would accept a motion to, um... Okay, so then I would accept a motion to, um, approve the committee assignments as proposed.
I'll make a motion to approve the committee assignments as proposed by the Chair.
I'll second that.
Any further discussions? Seeing none, if you could call the roll, please. Counsel Duma?
Aye.
Counsel Sanders?
Aye.
Counsel Blackstone?
Aye.
Counsel Brabec?
Aye.
Counsel Kuiper?
Aye.
Counsel Connolly? Counsel Weinstein?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero. Thank you. Seeing nothing else, I will consider us adjourned. Thank you, everybody.